Five, four, three, two, one, zero, all in running.
Hello and welcome to TV on TV. I'm State Representative Tommy Vitolo. You're watching Brookline Interactive Group. Today is Thursday, April 13th, and we have a great show for you today. We have Select Board candidate Paul Warren. He, along with two others, are asking for your up to two votes on May 2, 2023. Don't forget to get out and vote. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. to a.m. on May 2nd, and there's lots of races. We've been covering them. But before we get to the pre-recorded interview with Paul Warren, the news. I'll begin by reminding folks that Tax Day is coming. Traditionally, April 15th, due to the holiday, you get a little extra time, but you want to make sure your taxes are in, or at least your extension forms sent in. You gotta pay your taxes. A federal judge ruled that United States FDA's approval of the abortion Pril, Mifepristone, was invalid. But a federal appeals court has ruled that the drug could remain available. Massachusetts Governor Healey has stockpiled 15,000 doses of the drug in response. That's about a year's worth. In Tennessee, state representatives Justin Jones and Justin Pearson were reinstated to the Tennessee House of Representatives days after they were expelled from the membership for joining protests related to a mass shooting. Senator Elizabeth Warren held the first town hall of her reelection campaign at Hibernian Hall in Roxbury just last night. The Massachusetts House of Representatives released its fiscal year 24 budget yesterday. The budget makes key investments, including funding for higher education, means-tested transit fares, universal school meals, and housing assistance. Debate on the bill begins on April 24th. Juul will pay the state of Massachusetts $41 million in a settlement related to promoting vaping to young people. Brookline is preparing to host at least a portion of the 127th Boston Marathon on Monday. Beginning at 9:00 a.m., Beacon Street inbound will close, along with several streets adjacent and just to the south of Beacon Street. This is just like every year before. It'll be a great party. I hope you'll get out and enjoy. Finally, the Brookline Library will host a series of youth programs next week due to April break. And that's the news for the week. I can't wait to flip over and get this interview with Paul Warren, so stay tuned. And we're back. And as promised, today on TV on TV, I've got Select Board candidate Paul Warren. Paul Warren, thanks for being on the show.
Thanks for having me, Tommy. And good evening. It's great to see you, and I'm looking forward to chatting with you.
This is probably the first time you've been on Zoom. As you know, viewers, we view on Zoom, we film on Zoom. This might be Paul Warren's first time ever on Zoom, so bear with him. No, he's been on Zoom every day, six times a day during this campaign, and I know he was active for the last few years with government, which we did almost entirely on Zoom. So, welcome back to Zoom, Paul. Why don't you start by telling the viewers really what you've been doing your whole life, so we can get to know you a little bit?
Well, thanks, Tommy, and thanks for the opportunity to chat. So, it's a long story, so I'll try to keep it short. I have been in Brookline. I'm gonna cut to the chase. The Brookline, I've been in Brookline for 12 years. My wife, Amy, and I have two young children. They're at the Lawrence School. I'm a father of five, actually, the grandfather of two, and soon to be a grandfather-free. We have one of my older daughters has one on the way. I'm a stay-at-home dad. I've been home with the children for about nine years. I gave up a business career in order to stay home with the children. It's been one of the greatest joys of my life. You know, and as you mentioned, I'm not running for the Select Board. It feels like a unique time for me, given my background and some experiences. I've been, I was in business for 30 years, running large organizations, managing strategic budgets, setting budgets, working collaboratively with other executives to solve complex problems. You know, I started out life early. I was married at 17 years old. I had my first child at the ripe old age of 18. And in that situation, which was, you know, unusual, I did experience a time while I was going through college where I was on Section 8 housing, I was on food stamps, Medicaid, and WIC, and frankly, without that safety net, without that lift in support of social services, I would frankly, Tommy, would not be sitting before you. You know, I've also, as you mentioned, I do have some experience on Zoom. I'm an experienced public servant. I've been on, I've served on the advisory committee for two years on the zoning subcommittee. I was on the school finance subcommittee, and I've been a town meeting member for over four years, a very active town meeting member, and have tackled some of the thornier, more complex issues successfully, frankly, because I'm pretty good at finding common ground with people and collaborating. And then finally, you know, Amy and I are dedicated public school parents. We have two children at the Lawrence School. There'll be two children in September. Michael's currently at BEEP, and we're strong supporters of the public school system. I think that at this time, you know, that, the experience, the set of skills, the business skills, the understanding how our government works, it's a good time for that type of skill and experience to be on the Select Board. I think it's what voters are looking for.
And so, you know, you bring experience and leadership and, you know, the spirit of working together. But why Select Board? Why not school committee or back-to-advisory where they put in all kinds of hours contributing to the town? What makes Select Board the right note at this moment in time?
You know, Tommy, that's a great question. I think from the experiences of being on advisory, you know, digging into the budget, reading and adjudicating and reporting on many, many different Warren articles, including, you know, looking deeply at the school, the school budget and working with the school committee, they have their finance committee on the school budget. You know, I've come to a place where the, I feel that the Select Board, you know, they're dedicated folks. They do, they do a good job, but we've been very focused on the here and now, the day-to-day, like trying to, trying to keep, keep the lights on with the town. And, you know, I believe that we, in addition to doing that, we need to turn our focus to longer-term planning. We've got some, some pretty thorny issues ahead of us as a town. You know, we have a structural deficit that we need to address, and we need to do that in a very intentional way. We've got some, some significant issues towards how we're going to grow as a, as a community. How are we going to add additional housing? How are we gonna be able to add housing, but also make it affordable so that, so that people that live here today can stay here if they want? And people that want to come here can also join our community. So, I think there's, this is an area that I'm really good at, is planning. And I'm also very good at, at finding the common ground between various positions and helping to move things forward. So, I think it's, I think it's the right time for me to join, Tommy.
So, you talked about planning. You mentioned some of the areas, you know, where, where planning is important. But you're not gonna show up to the Select Board and be like, okay, we're doing planning, and that's all you're gonna do, right? You've got other ideas. You've got other interests. You've got other priorities. Tell us about some of the other things you want to work on. Maybe we'll loop back to planning, but I want to get a broader spectrum of what we should expect from a Paul Warren on the Select Board.
Right. So, you know, I care, as I, as I mentioned, given my, my background, I'm, I care deeply about, I'm gonna call it income, we call it affordable housing, but I'm gonna be very specific and call it income-restricted housing. And income-restricted housing is, is housing where, you know, we, you need to have an area median income of maybe 50% or less, or 80%. And, you know, we, the development and zoning changes that we're gonna be looking at in the next few years, actually in November, because of the MBTA Communities Act, we're gonna have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to significantly add, if we intentionally do it, you know, income-restricted housing that will create the opportunity for seniors that, that want to age in place, but maybe don't need that big house, or it's getting too expensive to be on their own in a different situation to stay. You know, be able to have firefighters and police and teachers be able to live in the community if they so choose. There's not many of them today that do that. And frankly, you know, creating an opportunity for others to come that, and helping to maintain diversity, but increase diversity, socioeconomic diversity, and racial diversity within Brookline. So, that's an important piece for me. You know, as you know, I think we've spoken about this in the past. Seniors are 20% of our population. It's forecasted to be 25 to 30% in the next 10 years. And, but yet, we spend one quarter of 1% of our budget on seniors. And frankly, the cost on aging, their budget, I think a third of it is actually comes in through donations. And, you know, I, I believe it's important that, that we take action to, and I don't know all the details of what it is, but I do think we need to develop a plan. We need to bring people together, our best minds in this area, and start looking at how are we going to support our aging population as they grow, as they become spread out more within Brookline. You know, we're building 900 units of housing over in South Brookline. There's a number of seniors that are, that are moving into that area. So, that's an area that's important to me. The other thing about seniors is, when you think about our boards and commissions, it's, it's not often when you go to a board and commission to see a senior or an aging adult representation there. And I think it's important that we add that lens to many of the things that we do so that we get the perspective on, on, you know, the needs and interests and perspective of aging adults as we go forward. So, there's a couple of things I'd be wanting to work on, Tommy.
So, you mentioned the MBTA Communities Act. You mentioned long-term planning, and I want to get a little bit into the details. As some viewers know, but maybe not all, the town is in a process of considering options for complying with the MBTA Communities Act, and that means changing the zoning. Harvard Street is one place where the town is considering changing the zoning. It certainly doesn't need to be the only place. Now, the trick is, Paul, if you win, you're on the Select Board starting on May 3rd. A proposal has to be written by September to come before the town meeting in November in order to pass something and have an opportunity to comply by the deadline of December 31st. And so, you show up for the job in May if you're elected. How do you influence that process? Do you think it's going exactly right now and doesn't need your thumbprints? Or do you bring something to that conversation, and what should we expect that to be?
Great, great question, Tommy. So, I'm gonna flip it a little bit as from the, instead of the Select Board's perspective, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come at it from a town meeting perspective. So, any proposal that gets put before town meeting in order for us to approve something that's compliant, or I'm gonna say near-compliant with the MBTA Communities Act, needs to pass a two-thirds threshold at town meeting. As you know, that's a high bar at town meeting. So, you know, you know, day one of, should I have the opportunity to join the Select Board, I would be looking at ways to provide the information and the options to town meeting so that they can find a way to reach that two-thirds threshold. I think there's, there's three potential things that we could do. One is, this, you know, the issue, as you know, that the MBTA Community Act guidelines, not the law, but the guidelines, do not allow us to require first-floor commercial. Now, this, this is a core issue for town meeting and, and for me and my campaign because I believe that we need to retain every square foot of commercial space in Brookline, and we need to expand it. So, we can't lose, lose ground here. So, I think we need to solve that. And I know that you're working on that with, with the legislature, and we have folks on the Select Board and the town administrator reaching out to, to the agencies that oversees this. But this is really core, and I think that if we can't find a way to get that, this will not pass a two-thirds threshold. Now, I think there could potentially be an option, I've said this the other night during one of our other forums, that, you know, the spirit of the MBTA Communities Act, the spirit of the law, is for us to create more housing, family housing and other housing near transit. You know, it isn't about stopping commercial development or having Brookline lose some of its commercial development. So, I believe there's potentially an option to pass an MBTA zoning set of articles that actually requires commercial on the first floor. And then we'll go cross that bridge with the Attorney General and the, and, and, you know, the MBTA agency that oversees it. The MB, I forget, you know the name of it. It's escaped my mind, but I think that's potentially one option. The other thing that, that town meeting will, I believe, will want, and it's in the form of Article 24, is another set of options, right? So, there's a, there's a Warren article asking for a moderators committee to be appointed to study and propose, you know, other, another option or something that could augment the Harvard Street corridor. And I think that's good. I think it's good for town meeting to have options. Town meeting likes options, and I think it increases our chance of having something pass.
So, in fact, earlier this week, you did a forum with Climate Action Brookline, and I don't want to rehash their forum, but I, you know, I know climate change is an issue that you've talked about. It's an issue frankly, at all three Select Board candidates have talked about in different but related ways. Make your pitch, I think, for how the Select Board with Paul Warren on it advances climate initiatives or goals on behalf of the town and beyond.
Yeah, good question, Tommy. So, I think, you know, two things off the top of my head. The first is that, you know, we need to think of the climate crisis and the way that we can respond to the climate crisis. We need to integrate climate response into everything that we do. So, as we set the budget, we should be thinking about, you know, what can we do within the budget to help with the response? As we're planning for reconfiguring or proposing reconfiguration for roadways or parking or, you know, multimodal micro-mobility lanes, everything that we do, we should have a lens of how, what can we do at this moment, with this planning moment, with this budget moment, with this zoning moment, to further our response to the climate crisis, to reduce our dependency on fossil fuels? So, I just think we need to think like that. It's not, let's come with three or four articles and just do that is a, is a big change. I think we need to do it in everything, and it's incremental. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you know, I believe that the vast majority of our carbon that, that Brookline produces is in our residential housing. And, and as, as you know, we talked about this, it's a multi-billion-dollar investment to transform our residential units away from fossil fuels. Now, I think one of the greatest barriers to transformation for residents is that in even businesses, it's just a lack of knowledge. They, they really don't know. They don't have a place to go to get really agnostic information. You can go to your local heating company, and they may not give you the, the best optimum solution to electrify. So, Mothers Up Front has been doing yeoman's work in this area. They keep, you know, they put on these education sessions. They have their Sunday coffees, and they're really doing incredible work. I think that the town could actually provide resources like that, education with our Sustainability Director, so that, that residents have a place to go. When Amy and I bought our home, it's a historic home, we need, we needed to get rid of an ancient oil system. We actually had two heating systems, an ancient oil system and a horrendous gas-fired system. Five years ago, when we planned it, we got rid, we got rid of the oil, and we went to a highly efficient condensing boiler. But, you know, if, if we had access to a different set of information or different resources or different advisors, we might have done something different back then than, and have us less dependent on fossil fuels or not dependent on fossil fuels. The access to the information is critical, and I think that's really important, you know, to help residents move away from fossil fuels as quickly as possible.
I want to talk a little bit about some of your endorsements. You were endorsed by Local 950, the firefighters, by the Brookline Police Association, and by AFSCME Local 1358, who represent municipal employees, warrants, teachers, and firefighters and police officers. Tell me about how Paul Warren as a Select Board is working through some of the challenges related to morale, related to contracts and pay. The town has had a tough go through COVID interfacing with some of these groups of employees, and, and we see it in lots of different ways. You're clearly attuned to it. What did you say to them, or what do you, what do you anticipate bringing to the Select Board in the domain of our town employees?
That's, that is, that's a great question, Tommy, you know, and this is a little bit of where my, my background, my business background comes in because, you know, and for any corporation, and I know this doesn't translate perfectly to municipalities, but in a corporation, employees are the lifeblood of the corporation. Human capital is so incredibly important to the success of a business that, you know, senior professionals have been in business a long time. We're very attuned to this. And so, you know, you asked, what did I say to, to the unions? It was very simple. I said, I want Brookline to become a destination employer again, a place where people want to come and work. Today, people really don't want to work in Brookline. We're losing people. Now, we do attract a person here and there, but, but on, on average, our turnover is pretty high, our attrition side. We're down, you know, 30 offices in, in the, in the police department. We, we're, we have a similar type of situation developing. It's not down so much, but in the fire department, the relations between the union and the town are, are, are great right now. And so, that's really what they responded to. You know, people leave their jobs for three reasons, Tommy. Number one, they hate their boss. Number two, they don't see opportunities for growth and development for themselves in their career. And three, they, they, they leave for money. Now, you can correct the third one, money, and give people more money, and, you know, we need to do that. We don't have contracts with, to our unions. We need to settle this, and this is important. But if we don't fix the other two issues, the, the money thing just becomes money after a while. It becomes used to it. So, I believe we really need to transform how we speak about, work with, encourage, thank, pay, you know, develop our employees and, and re, and remember that our town doesn't function well at all. It doesn't function without our employees. And every one of us, every voter, every resident ultimately is, is an employer for the folks that are working within our, within our municipal government. So, that's what I said to them. And I do, I really do hope that in, quickly, we will settle through collective bargaining, the, the two contracts with outstanding police and fire. We, we need to settle those. They've been without contracts for two years. It's just, it's something we need to settle so that we can move on and start increasing morale and having people come work in Brookline again.
Now, you know, from your term on advisory, if not before, and some viewers know, but maybe not all, that the town is limited in how much it can increase its revenue year-on-year by Prop 2.5, which says essentially for, for properties that weren't brand-newly built in the last year, the total amount of tax revenue can go up by 2.5%, maybe some a little more, some a little less. And if costs are going by more than 2.5%, then we have to figure out what to do to make up the gap. And so, we can pay employees less or try, right? We can lay people off. We can do less, or we can ask the voters to raise the amount of money that they pay in taxes. And we're seeing that this spring on May 2nd, and that's question two, the operating override, a permanent tax increase to help pay for these things. We also have question one, which is a temporary tax increase for the life of the bond to raise $172 million to build a new Pierce School in addition to a renovation of the historic building. And both of these are tax increases. Both of these are questions on the ballot. The voters, of course, decide. I'm sure you're gonna vote on May 2nd. What are your thoughts on question one, Pierce for capital, and question two, the operating override, a permanent tax increase for things like salaries?
Thanks, Tommy. So, first, I will say this before I answer. I've, I've been canvassing. I've spoken to many, many hundreds of people. And there's, there's concerns on both sides. There's concerns that we're not doing enough for our schools and, and our employees, and we need to pay them more. And then, on the other side, there are concerns about Brookline becoming more expensive and unaffordable as, as our taxes increase. You know, I, my, my position on question one, which is the Pierce School, is I am supporting it. And, you know, we've spoken about this. I, I attended a school very much like the Pierce School, an open concept school, open classroom school, in my seventh, eighth, and ninth grade at the Audison Junior High in Arlington, Massachusetts. It, you know, it was a disastrous educational experience for me. I was probably a kid. Today, I would be probably on an IEP and diagnosed maybe with attention deficit. I was, I was pretty attention deficit back then, a little hyper. I've calmed down a little since then. But it did, it did set me back, and, and frankly, it created social issues for me. It set me back educationally. I nearly failed out of high school. You know, I think I mentioned this the other night. I, I, you know, it, it had a significant impact on me. So, when I, in that school, by the way, Arlington saw a fit to tear it down because they realized that the open classroom, the open classroom theory of education was a complete failure inflicted upon, upon the youth of the 60s and 70s. So, when I go into the Pierce School, I see that school all over again. I see large, open classrooms, you know, cement walls that echo. I see a building that's ADA, it's not compliant ADA compliance. If you have a hearing issue, any type of disability with hearing or physical disability, you can't attend that school. You can't go there. You need to go somewhere else. That's not an equitable education in the, in the spirit and value of what many people come to Brookline for and why we're willing to pay such high taxes. So, I support the, the, the override for, for the Pierce School. I also support the, the operating override because these things go kind of hand-in-hand. We need to be able to pay our employees in order for them to be able to have a living wage and, and remain competitive and stay and, and help us. And there's a number of other things within the operating override that are important, like our streets. I met with Erin Gallantine last week. She's the Commissioner of DPW. And, you know, we're at least $50 million have deferred maintenance in projects for our roadways and our sidewalks, a public way. And the operating override is, I think, two or two-and-a-half million to contribute towards that. So, these, these things are important. But conversely, we have to be very sensitive and conscious that, that rising costs, rising taxes does put a lot of pressure on, on the household budgets for residents that are on fixed incomes or low incomes. And I think that we need to start looking at ways to relieve the burden, especially for, for aging adults and seniors, similar to what Newton's been doing. Newton's really maximized the number of tax credits, abatements that seniors can take. You know, water and sewage abatements, even fees and parking fees, I think, are, are things that they're doing. Anything that we can do to relieve it, I think, is important. But we need to go to two, two things at once. We need to grow. We're, we're a growing community. We value education. We value our employees. But we also want to make it affordable. So, we need to do two things at once.
Paul, we're just about out of time. I want to thank you for coming on Brookline Interactive and telling us about yourself. Folks, he's got a website, paulwarren.org. As you know, the election is May 2nd. There are three candidates. Two are gonna win. One is gonna lick their wounds and maybe try again sometime in the future. You can vote for one or two on your ballot Tuesday, May 2nd. Paul Warren, I'm sure, would love to have one of those two votes. Paul, thanks for coming on the show.
Thanks so much, Tommy. And in the spirit of Tommy Vitolo, you can call me at any time. My phone number is 617-869-5430. I'd be happy to hear from you and speak with you. Thanks so much, Tommy, for having me on your show.
Viewers, thanks for watching, and we'll see you again next week. Viewers, thanks for watching, and we'll see you again next week.